You all set?
Alright, I'll use.
Alright, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, welcome to the, uh, regular meeting of the, uh, inland wetlands. Um, I'd like to call. The seat to call the order and seating of the members.
Alright, um, Scott Harley, absent. Eddie Alvarino.
Here.
Robert Porson, I see he's here. Robert?
Yeah.
Um, Lawrence Edwards is absent, Mike Florio.
Here.
Christopher Horna.
Here.
Thomas Welsh.
Here.
Mark Berno is absent. Doug Elliott.
Here.
And, um, Amy Handler, absent, okay?
Well, I was gonna seat Mark Bruno for Scott, so who, who else we have for an alternate?
Well, you can see Doug.
I've seen him for Larry Edwards.
Okay, and then the, um, the other two alternates are not here.
Okay.
Um, we still have one, two, three, four, we still have enough members.
Okay. Um. I'd like to, uh, note that, um, the town engineer, uh, Chuck Eaton is here and town council. Certified soil scientist Michelle Ford. Uh, are in attendance for tonight's meeting.
There in the back, I think you all know they're right there.
There you go.
Michelle.
And then I'd like to, uh, make a motion to add IWC twenty-five dash ten for zero. Uh, oh, zero Cow Hill Road to the agenda, uh, application. Uh, to amend the, uh, official town inland wetlands and water course map under new business. I need a two-thirds vote, two-thirds of the members have to vote in favor of to add it. So can we take a roll call, please?
Okay, who, who would like to make the motion to?
I'll make them.
For Chris, okay?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike? Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? No, okay, there is, you know, I'm asleep.
Alright, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the October seventh. Meeting we had.
I'll second that.
Hello? We, uh, do you want to officially?
Whatever.
She can entertain the motion, so do you wanna make it time?
Yes, yes. But you can call for the vote.
Yeah, we, we, we do a roll call vote? Or make them raise your hand?
Or just, alright, so everyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstained? There is, you know, I'm asleep.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. On IWC twenty-five dash eight. Can we have the secretary read the legal notice of public hearing into the record?
Um, I'm sorry, Eddie, can I just interrupt you for a second, um, the motion for the public hearing? Um, someone needs to second?
I'll second it if it's been moved.
Did anybody make a motion?
No.
So Chris will be the second, okay?
There's a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
No one opposed, change? Okay, alright, so now you're off, I'll read the legal notice.
I'd like to have this. The public hearing is now open, right?
Uh, Mike's going to read the legal notice of public hearing into the record.
That's what I'm, I just asked, have, have the secretary read? The legal notice of public hearing into the record.
The town plan and inland wetlands commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. The Rose Room of the Williams Day and Andrew Memorial Town Hall, fifty-four East Main Street, Flint, Connecticut. Considered a foul. IWC twenty-five eight wanting to return bike application for earlier activity within fifty feet of an inland wetland. Replace a deteriorated pedestrian bridge at Linton Premium Market with new pedestrian bridge in Culver Crossing. Assessors map forty-three, block twenty-four, and last one, zone B one. Application by Brian Flemings and Max Orjeski. Is that right?
It was Zarkus.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're not the person.
So it's the Incoher Simon Property Group, a, oh, Kathy Moles, general manager, Linton Premium Market. Application I W twenty-five dash eight. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard and written communications received. The application and the accompanying maps and correspondence are available on the town's website for public viewing of, uh, for inspection. Dated at Clinton, Connecticut, this ninth day of October, twenty twenty-five. Scott Harley, Chair of Clinton Inland Wetlands Commission. Directly email, emailed to the Harbor News to appear at two times on Thursday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. That's him.
That, thank you, Michael. Uh, at this time, I would like to ask the applicant to present their application.
Thank you.
Yeah, here, right. Alright, well, uh, I guess before I begin, uh, thank you for all for coming tonight. I think we're, um, very excited to be here. I know we've been, uh, working very closely with, uh, Melissa, Kathy, and, uh, and, um, Chuck and Michelle. And, um, I guess I won't introduce our team here, so I, myself, Alex, um, I'm one of the environmentalists on the project. With Max, who is a professional soil scientist and wetland scientist, and then we also have Brian, who is our bridge engineer. Um, on the, as on the agent side, on the African side here, we have, uh, Kathleen, and we also have, um, Sarah. And on the phone, we also have Rich. Um, so I guess to start, we've been, this project's been working for about three years now. Uh, we initially started our inspections in twenty twenty-two, and we've also conducted a hydrology, a hydrology assessment and a wetland delineation. And so this, what we're gonna go through here is basically our overview of our project, um, some, uh, figures and exhibits to kind of illustrate everything we've. Put together and, um, what we, our application basically summarizes, so. Alright, so I guess we're all familiar with Clint three mountains. We have two sections, also, I'm sorry, I guess we can't see this, presentation, but we have two sections here, so we have the bigger mall section from the left. And then down here in this little gray shading with our project location, um, our bridge is gonna be located in the ravine area. Um, essentially, as of right now, there's two ways to access both sides of the big mountains. It's through a roadway, uh, bridge with a sidewalk, which currently doesn't have railings or it's also not A D A combined. And then our pedestrian bridge that is currently there. Um, and so what we are currently, this project we're proposing is basically a new crossing in that, uh, project location. So we're gonna hand it off to Brian to kind of talk about our inspections.
So since two thousand twenty-two, um, and for the last, and just today, we've been doing the bridge safety inspections. And the bridge safety inspections are very similar to what it'd be if their bridge gets done. There's a federal requirements of how and when and all the standards and encoding that we follow. And we can tailor that as well to the pedestrian bridge. So we've been doing that since twenty twenty-two. Um, and from that, we identified the durations, the deficiencies, and how to classify all that stuff. And we see that there's cracks and deterioration with the deck, the steel, as you go out there and you look at pictures, you see, um, visually see that. But from the structural engineering side, they also understand what's happening as well. But we see the corrosion, we, the paint system isn't working anymore. And, uh, we've seen signs of settlement with the substructures. And we've addressed that with two previous projects with Simon Properties to fix the tripping hazards out there as well. But we haven't arrested that settlement of the substructures at the abutments. Um, and there's drainage issues that the water, there's no firs guiding that water down to any storm sewer. It just goes off the edge of the bridge. So all that stuff kind of brings this bridge to where it's at today. And with that, we are recommending that the bridge is replaced for long-term. Um, strategy for safety, for maintenance, for the appearance out there for the people. Um, and as well as the ability to prevent people from ju- dropping trash off the bridge deck into the wetlands. Um, so there's a lot of reasons why that this bridge is being recommended to be replaced.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the wetlands here. Um, once we sort of determined that, that the bridge was in need of replacement, we, uh, did a well and delineation. Um, I completed the well and delineation in April, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the soils observed match the USDA NRCS soil that was matched below there. They are poorly drained, the hydrology is characteristic of wetlands, surface water in places, some seasonal groundwater discharge. Uh, and drainage patterns throughout the wetlands. The vegetation, as you can see in the picture on the right, um, below the bridge is somewhat sparse. There's some invasive species there adjacent to the bridge, it is, is dominated by natives. Um, they're characteristic of wetlands, we have skunk cabbage, red maples, yellow birch, sweet pepper bush. Um. So the wetland elimination was completed, and actually, um, there was the, the sidewalk that was done. And Michelle also, um, had gone out to observe the well and boundaries. And I think we're all in agreement that those are accurate as matched. Um. So following the well and delineation, we performed an alternatives analysis to try and see what made the most sense for a replacement structure. Um, we considered the no action alternative, which really doesn't solve the problem. There would be no well and impacts, but also we're left with a deteriorating bridge, so that was pretty quickly eliminated. We considered, uh, rehabilitation of the bridge, replacement of the bridge with another bridge, and replacement of the bridge with a culvert. And we, it's a little hard to see these things, but we evaluated them based on duration of construction, maintenance requirements, environmental impacts, obviously, uh, a cost. Um, other sort of amenities that any sort of structure could provide and the service life of the structure. Um, so the rehabilitation alternative. Would require, I would say, all, all alternatives require some level of environmental impact just to get equipment down below the structure. And either remove the existing structure or perform the necessary rehab. Um. The rehab alternative would, uh, take the most time at five to six months. It's a pretty complex process of, um, covering the bridge to ensure that, um, debris is not sort of strewn about. When they're going to either sandblaste, repaint, um, and, and all those various rehab activities. Um. It really only extends the life of the bridge by ten to fifteen years, and then we're sort of back where we, we are now, so, um. It's also the most costly, so that was not, um, not the preferred alternative. We looked into replacement with, uh, another bridge. Um, this had, um, slightly lower cost and quicker construction, similar amounts of, uh, impacts. Obviously temporary impacts of the welling to get down there and perform this work. Um, and then potentially also some permanent impacts depending on what sort of bridge structure would be, uh, installed. It may not be, you know, might not have been the exact same bridge that's there now, so potentially also some permanent impacts. Um. The bridge, if we have replaced the existing bridge with another bridge, we're looking at maintenance and inspections every twenty-four months. Um, so those would cause additional sort of repeated impact of the wetlands when it's necessary to go down there and then perform this maintenance and inspectional work. Um, and that bridge would last, uh, we estimate thirty to forty years. Uh, also has limited space for benches, landscape, bathing trash cans, things like that, um, which are some of the, I think, amenities that we wanted to include in this, in this new design. Um. The culvert alternative is our preferred alternative. It has the temporary impacts that, that all of these alternatives have. It does have some permanent impacts. We have attempted to widen the culvert that we're proposing as large as possible, even larger than is really required by the hydro study. To reduce those permanent impacts. Um, but despite those, those, those slightly more, uh, well and impacts, it does, um. Have a lot more benefits, the, the, um, the slopes can be vegetated and planted with native species to enhance habitat. Um, we've included designs to minimize trash with the two fences and additional, uh, additional trash cans there. It will last the longest, we have to make forty to fifty years. Um, it is the most economical and quick to build. Um, and it does allow for a more open view shed between the two shopping areas. Um. And for those reasons, that was the, the preferred alternative. And so we're gonna share with you now, I think, some renderings. Um, Brian's gonna run through those of what we're proposing here.
So the long span arch culvert is the preferred option. It is actually the similar shape to what the behavior bridge crossing is that is just upstream of this location. So we took that concept, we used it here, we lengthened it as much as feasibly possible to adjust for the wetland. Uh, we are proposing use gabian basket walls, uh, sort of wire faced with stone that's out on the, out on the site and the property already. So we're trying to bring in that, say, rock natural feeling. We're proposing a chain link fence for fall protection at those headwalls due to the height. And then we're proposing a picket style fence along the curve lines for the trail. That's high level, one of the renderings we got. Uh, here's a typical cross section through that barrel, so you have metal for the culvert. You have the fill above, we have a fifteen foot trail, um, seventeen foot six offset to the next fence, um, by the head and walls for the gabians. And vegetation, plantings, trees, and opportunities for trash cans and benches and lights. Yeah, plain view, uh, showing. The rough idea of where the trees, where the vegetation goes on the north end of there. We're introducing a seating area to take the seating areas out of the parking lot where the food trucks are. And move that to, in, in, away from the traffic. Um, and providing some small areas for people to sit, sit down in. So there's a couple of smaller routine walls up, up high to help with, uh, help with the grading up there. So.
So through our coordination with the town plan and, uh, Michelle and, uh, Chuck. We've kind of developed a mitigation plan for our, uh, temporary and permanent well and impacts. Um, this is essentially to help offset our impacts during construction as it's going to be, essentially installed post-construction. So our first phase of our mitigation plan is native plant installation essentially is we are going to be seeding and planting post-construction. To enhance the habitat of the wetland for native species, pollinators. Also, it's going to essentially be, uh, uh, for better aesthetics, um, plus construction to the bridge. The second, uh, portion of the mitigation plan is what we created was an invasive species and trash management protocol. Um, especially, uh, essentially, there's going to be a qualified contractor for contractor in invasive species management. And it's going to, they're going to be treating invasive species in the wetland area directly adjacent to the Atlantic Bridge. It's going to be for a three-year period, spring, summer, and fall. And, um, it's, they're gonna essentially creating a management plan and a monitoring board. So we can track the, uh, progressive treatments of invasives to make sure the overall plan is reduction of invasive density throughout that area. And then lastly, with the, um, debris within that protocol is our debris management essentially. Through feedback from the commission, we have added more trash man along the path to reduce the overall amount of trash finding its way to the wetland. Also, Simon Properties will be monthly, uh, debris cleanup along the pedestrian cr- uh, bridge and, uh, walkways. And then coordinated debris cleanup within the wetland area. All these, um, activities together, we truly believe that it's going to be increasing the overall ecosystem services of the wetland. While at the same time offsetting our wetland impact post-construction. And then I think we have two more graphics to show you guys.
So this, I mean, uh, two more visual graphics to help paint a picture of what we are proposing. So this is kind of facing north towards the seating area. Uh, shows the gabian basket wall, the chain link fence, then the white picket fence and lighting, the vegetation. And then one other view looking towards either north or south, but this is north. So these are going up a grade to, from south to north. So we can see the lights and all the furnishings that we're proposing, uh, graphically, so everybody can see. Um, from black and white on our plans to. Nice pretty picture.
So I guess if any questions now, we're happy to hear them. Um. And.
I have a question, you know, the, you, the bridges there now had a roof. Did you ever consider a roof being needed on this bridge?
When we worked with Simon Properties, they, they had no, they wanna see, they want people to see from north to south and see this thing open up. And, and trigger us going back and forth. So the bridge is located there because of all the sidewalks and it's aligned now, and they wanna open this up so that people can see. So that roof really kind of hinders that, but we've talked about it, but. There was no need for the new concept.
I have a question on the debris management. Uh, we've talked about the monthly debris cleanup on the embankments, and then accordingly. Uh, below, is that gonna be for the next forty to fifty years? How is that commitment going to be sustained?
So I, I guess I could take that, um, so in-house or if it's a matter of contracting, we would essentially. Manage and mitigate the traps that's found under and around the bridge. It would be a regular, we're, we're doing it now, we just need to identify a frequency that makes most sense for the location. But it, it should be something that's frequently planned for.
Okay, so that is a commitment that you folks are making.
Yeah, it's something that we're, we're doing currently, so we just need to maybe at this moment increase the frequency of. Of, of doing.
Thanks, Sue. That was my biggest concern about the whole project. Just that, thank you.
So I, also, the, our, the way their bridges currently laid out is the space between fences and the distance between the path to the edge of the embankment. Or the, the gabian walls is hopefully sufficient enough that it ultimately, trash will fall on the embankments rather than go into the wet system. And also the vegetation there hopefully will. Provide, not incent, but not have people throw trash over it.
I know.
Yeah. But that was the intent of the, I, I appreciate that.
How much wider is this compared to the other ridge?
So the existing bridge is twelve feet, like a twelve foot path.
Yeah.
And we're providing fifteen foot trail, but the structure itself is like. Forty years, something like that. Forty feet, well, seventeen, thirteen.
Fifteen.
Oh, okay, I mean, you can't see the numbers, but, uh, so. I mean, and people, we're putting the fences, uh, bottom walls for fall protection, but the picket fence is really just to deter people from hopping that and going. So if trash doesn't get in there, it's, like we said, it should go into the vegetation and person weather. Which should help improve the existing condition where people are just, there's nothing stopping them from dropping it over there.
Right, right. It'll be easier to tackle the trash with the culvert, with the, how it will be laid out.
Right.
Versus now going down to the gully, it's primarily, that's where it is at the location.
I understand.
Yeah, but.
And, and I, and I think not putting a cover on it also allows for more visibility to, for, you know, to protect from that. Because if, if it's not covered, you can really see what's going on. Um, and you can, you can discourage, it would be, I'd like to think that we could discourage people from throwing things off the bridge.
Um, may I have your attention, could, could, could let, uh, the partic- uh, the, um, applicants finish their, uh, presentation? And then, um, Chuck and Michelle will, um, speak and then, then we'll ask the members for all their input. But let them finish their, um, presentation first. And then you have, you'll have time to answer all the questions.
They're, I think they're finished, eh?
They're finished, yeah, they asked for questions.
They asked for questions.
Okay.
I think Eddie was giving Chuck and Michelle an opportunity to speak. If you guys have anything to say after reviewing the application and the reports.
Uh. So Chuck Eaton, town engineer, uh, now the applicants, uh, worked with us and, uh, the, the engineering comments are addressed. I don't, Michelle, I don't know if you wanna say anything about the invasive species or anything like that?
Yeah, I think initially on our review, as you likely saw from our first round of comments, you know, we had some concerns with the permanent well and loss, you know, for our pedestrian bridge. It seems like there were ways, yeah. Um, they strengthened their alternatives analysis, um, further justified why they're having that impact. And then also strengthened their mitigation, right? The debris down there is, it's pretty gross, um, and it's ongoing. So I think not only for the fences and the vegetation, but also adding a lift along like a curb, right? I think that's gonna help. And then the invasive species management plan, um, is gonna be very helpful as well to try to just give some of those natives that are still there holding on kind of a leg up. Um, so again, I think that they really work with us to address our comments and justify the need for the project. And personally, I think it's always a struggle to justify a permanent wetland loss, but they have definitely supported that. So I think what they've done is they've really come to meet us more in the middle, so I have no more, more concerns. And I think also they came back and, um, modified their stormwater system as well. Um, and tied it into the existing system, which will also help. So, so overall, although there is a wetland loss, I think this is gonna be an improvement to what's currently existing.
Thank you.
Chuck, do you have anything to add?
Uh, you did it, no, not, not, uh, not unless if you want to discuss the bond. I, I did have a chance to review the bond, uh, before, just before the meeting here, it's been a crazy week. Um, and I, nothing, nothing stood out to me, um, you know, the seventy thousand dollars, that, that seems appropriate, um.
I'm sorry, Chuck, can you repeat that figure?
Seventy.
I think it was like sixty-eight and change, thousand dollars, so. So that was our estimate, but we were asking that the actual amount be based on the successful construction bid? Is that something that would be acceptable? I think that would, that would really be up to, uh, the commission in that, you know, you're obviously not going to have. Uh, they need to make their decision before you have a contractor on board. I believe time. Sure, yeah. Wow, that's correct, so, you know, that's something that you could, you could discuss with the commission and.
It may, there may be an opportunity too to, um, set the bond at seventy thousand dollars with the caveat that the town engineer could consult for a reduced amount. Should the, the bids come back, you know, in a, in a minute that justifies that, but I would say we would just want town engineer to sign off on that. Over, over the number comes up.
Can we add that to the original motion?
You could.
Alright, and you're up, I think, right?
I, I heard you, I heard you, Ca- Kathy.
Yeah, um, would anybody from the public have any questions, comments?
Yeah, what do you, what do you think about the bond?
Oh, Abby just spoke about it, that, um, it would be best to go with the mountain and Chuck Eaton, our town engineer can come back to that if there's a need to.
And if you defer that, that decision to staff and to the town engineer, then the, the applicant does not have to come back for the inland's commission to make that reduction. We can do that administratively.
Okay. Uh, any, any, uh, anything from the commissioners, they wanna ask? Anything else they wanna ask?
No.
No.
Um, does anybody wanna make a motion to, uh, continue or close the public hearing?
Have we any, any comments from the public?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, is there any, is there any comments from the public?
Nobody's raising their hand, Eddie. There's no one who wishes to make a comment from the public.
Um, in that case, we could make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call vote, Kathy?
Absolutely, um. Um, Robert Porson?
Yes.
Michael Florio?
Yep.
Chris Forda?
Yes.
Thomas Welsh?
Yes.
Doug Elliott?
Yes.
And Eddie's not voting because he's in his chair.
Unless we need him for a form.
Eddie, or would you like to close the public hearing?
Yes, I would make a motion to close it.
And if unanimous, no abstentions, no oppositions.
Okay. Um, can uh? Okay, um. Anybody wanna uh add to it or amend it? We can, we can make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, so the next thing on the agenda is the administrative review. So if the commission closed the public hearing tonight, they can deliberate. I have a draft motion. Feel free to make any changes that you'd like to make to it.
Yeah, Michael, will you read that motion that Kathy made?
It's um, see, this is for uh.
Go ahead, Robert, you can read it. Do you have it? Go ahead, read it.
Yeah, Chris has it.
I move to approve application IWC dash twenty-five dash eight. Twenty killingworth turnpike. Application for regulated activity within fifty feet of inland wetlands. For replacement of pedestrian bridge at the Clinton Premium Outlets. With a new pedestrian bridge and culvert crossing. For application dated ten twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. Prepared by Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated and her plans and titled sixty percent site development plans for pedestrian bridge replacements. Clinton Premium Outlets, twenty Killingworth Turnpike, Clinton, Connecticut. Zero six four one three, dated ten twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five. With the following findings and conditions. Findings. One, the plans stated eight twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five were reviewed by town engineer Chuck Eaton and certified soil scientist Michelle Ford. Who submitted their report to the IWC on nine twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five. They reviewed the revised plans and they submitted their report to the IWC on ten thirty, twenty twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five. And their report, they noted that all of their concerns and requests for additional information have been addressed. Two, the application meets the requirements of section seven of the Clinton Inland Wetlands Regulations Application Requirements. Three, the application meets the requirements of section nine of the Clinton Inland Wetlands Regulations Public Hearings. Conditions. One, invasive species management and herbicide applications must be conducted by licensed applicator familiar with identification of target invasive species and experienced in working in sensitive resource areas such as wetlands. Two, posting of erosion and sedimentation control bond in an amount determined by the town engineer. Said bond must be in the form of a bank or certified charter. Three, not later than two weeks prior to the commencement of any work, the permittee shall submit to the Clinton Inland Wetlands Commission the names and addresses of any contractors employed to conduct the permitted work and anticipated schedule for completion. Four, prior to the start of the work, the permittee shall give a copy of the permit to the contractors who will be carrying out the authorized activities. Five, prior to the start of construction, the permittee shall contact the wetlands enforcement officer to inspect the installation of soil and erosion controls. Six, permittee shall not deviate from the reference site plans without the prior authorization of the Clinton Inland Wetlands Commission or the Wetlands Enforcement Officer. Seven, on or before ninety days after completion of the authorized work, permittee shall submit as built, quote unquote, plans.
Can I ask a question? The bond would um some sort of other surety instead of like a check or a money order?
That's in the regulations.
Right.
Um, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, so I I took that right out of the regs. All right, Zen, have a second for that motion?
I'll say it.
Okay. Um, starting discussion?
No.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, so Carrie's unanimous, so. Thank you.
And you're up.
Okay, so do we have any correspondence?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's going other new business, so yeah, not not making any correspondence.
Um, let me uh read about the uh, the new application that we got.
Uh, yeah, so just to check, I I don't have any old business. Does anyone else have any old business that we need to discuss? Megan?
No.
Um, okay, so I don't really have anything new to report, so we can move to new business. So before we um accept the application, we have a review of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Clinton Inland Wetlands Commission's annual report. Um, so Eddie, if it's okay with you, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the annual report?
I'll make a motion to accept the annual report.
One second.
Okay. Okay, then at the beginning of the meeting, Eddie does. Oh, uh, let's see, I didn't think about that. I went to the first and the second. Um, is everyone, anyone else, uh, anyone just discussion? No?
No.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, Carrie's unanimously. Then Eddie made a motion or asked for motion at the beginning of the meeting to um, you know, before we have the application, right? Just see we have bonding discussion on here, so I don't know if Abby has anything to report on that.
Sure, so I've had um some limited conversation with our chair Scott Harley about this, but wanted to branch the full commission. There's been discussion about setting amounts of bonding for small residential projects and what tier and whether or not to bond. I've done some calls around to our neighboring communities. Most are not requiring residential, right? Like same folks who are either in single family homes or, you know, sort of smaller properties and smaller projects to submit bonding. I've had some conversations with Chuck about this too. Um, because the likelihood of us ever calling that bond to go do work on residential property is very, very small. If there were to be a project that, you know, was, you know, had significant slopes or had, you know, had a reason for us to be holding money from from our residents, that would be certainly a reason to consider that. And those could be brought to the town engineer on a case-by-case basis. But largely speaking, the, you know, sort of the policy of setting, you know, a a bond for some of these smaller projects seems to be an undue burden on our residents. And so it's it's my recommendation that that's unnecessary unless the commission finds a project warrants um bonding because it has significant potential to impact wetland resource areas.
I I thought at one time Sky put together a sliding scale.
He did, and even that, so so what, so it's it's a little bit older and it's what we would, you know, if we're gonna keep any kind of um, you know, piece of this, Chuck and I were talking about what would be the metric of setting that? So it's not something that a commission member has provided, but it's done through the town offices and the town engineer. Um, and whether that's, you know, sort of using DOT pricing or, you know, other standard metrics um, or means or other kinds of things. It seemed even that was burdensome to folks in a way that is not necessarily beneficial. A lot of these old bonds, they're cash or, you know, the checks. Um, they sit in the town finance office and folks frankly forget about it. So we'll come, you know, contact them and say, we're, we're holding your money. Or um, you know, folks will say, you know, I I had no idea, you have a thousand dollars of mine and then I want that back. And so even that sliding scale for some folks is a significant burden when they're already spending money on their project.
So you're saying like people are putting pools or whatever? We used to set a bond for them. You don't wanna do that?
So what I'm saying is that take them on a case-by-case basis, and if you find that there is a potential impact to well resource areas and you wanna hold an erosion set of control bond, which is really all we would be doing because the the town is not willing to go back on their residential property and complete the project. The only thing we would ever do, we had to call a bond, is essentially go in and make sure it was stable. But if if we're talking about, you know, flat property is a significant eighty feet away from resource areas, I don't believe, in my opinion, there's a need to be holding on to folks' money for that kind of project. Where there's a true impact or potential for impact, and I think that's a very different story. But that's why we have our professionals who can, you know, you know, specifically evaluate the resource area slopes leading to it and and sort of say, yes, this is something we really recommend a bond for.
So they'll recommend the bond, then we'll set the bond.
Right, so it would come, yes, it would, it would come through your consulting professionals, not from sort of a, you know, it it takes the burden off of commission members to set those dollars. And so and then only apply them when necessary, so the burden isn't undue for those projects. That really doesn't mean.
Right.
The town will let it as much.
That makes sense.
Yeah, totally makes sense.
Thank you.
So what we do is that what we can do then is essentially write out the policy for the commission to formally approve it. This way at least you know uh that we're ahead of.
Right.
We'll just make it easier for them to say, you know, we won't get a bond for this.
Correct, and then on receipt, you can even, you know, start to evaluate these things. So, you know, we know, Captain, I will be an application and we say, look, this is a, this is you know, really close to the wetlands. It's gotta, you know, it's gotta be slope to it, you know, if something ever was disturbed, we would need to make sure protection is in place and it needs to be stabilized. Then we can talk about what that looks like.
Right, that that would be a little bit of flexibility.
Right.
Correct.
If somebody went off the rails and did something really egregious and.
Yeah, and and again, things, you know, sees and correct actions may be different from general applications as well. So there's that layer that we'll talk about.
Yeah, if somebody did something like that, even when they are building a project, I could always come back out with a violation. And then that would give us the opportunity, and the commission could, you know, set fines or, you know, ask for reclamation, whatever was necessary. So there, we still have an opportunity to do something if that happened.
We'll write the policy and review for the whole, what I have.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Thank you. Thank you, bro.
Okay, Eddie, so now that, now that you've um accepted or, you know, received the application or put it on the agenda anyway. I made a draft to um receive it. It is complete. Um, it's an application. I I did put out a stack report and I also have plans. It's to officially amend the official Clinton, Connecticut inland wetlands water courses map. Um, and the reason it would be coming to you for that um, for this, this is part of regulation section fourteen. Um, which states that if um the, if someone is amending the map, a public hearing may be held on an application for boundary verification that has no significant impact. Public hearings shall be held on petitions that significantly amend the inland wetlands and water courses map. This is an eight-and-a-half acre property at Zero Cal Hill in the R thirty zone. The applicant is planning to develop the property. Um, town consultant certified soil scientist Michelle Ford will be going on site to verify the accuracy of the inland wetlands delineation. So what's different about this is if somebody were to have to have a wetland scientist or in the certified soil scientist come up to their property to delineate wetlands for a project is different than this application because they're asking to amend the official town map. So it's a town document. And that's why it's a different path. So um, I was proposing, and again, it's up to the commission, um, that this be determined to be, you know, to go to public hearing. And I have some findings and if anyone wants to discuss it or make a motion, um.
Yeah, Kathy, I I'd like to make a motion to um add it and have a pub, schedule it for a public hearing.
Okay.
Because he's, he's, he's leaving his property line and going on, you know what I mean? He's making.
Um, Eddie, would you like anyone to read the draft motion or to, into the record?
Yes, we read that, Mike?
I move, I move to receive application IW twenty-five ten zero Cal Hill Road. Application for inland wetland boundary at the amendment, Brianland Wetland Boundary, to clarification, playing on Al Hill Road and Martin Drive, geared by Thomas Stevens and Associates for Joe DeFilippo dated eleven four, two thousand twenty-five and scheduled for an application for public hearing on Tuesday, December second. And I make it a final findings, findings. The commission finds that the public hearing shall be found. Maybe help at this application because it it may significantly amend the town of Clinton's inland wetlands work course official map to the proposed amendment to the town significantly impact future development of the property.
All right, let's send one second.
I'll start with that.
Okay. All right, um. Is anyone, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Are, uh, anyone opposed? Abstained? Any discussions? Motion carries unanimously.
Kathy, um, you do, you do have Michelle Ford going out there, right, to check the?
Yes. Michelle drafted up an estimate, so I've submitted that to the applicant and they've already painted. And so she'll be going out to verify the delineation and we'll have a report for the public hearing.
Okay.
All right.
Kathy, do you send this out to us?
Yes.
Because?
Yes, but it's, um, I have paper copies of the, if you'd like to take one home, there's plenty for. Yeah, I'll give three or two pieces.
Chris would like one too, yeah.
Sure. Yeah, and you do. Perfect. All right, Eddie, so the last item is, do you have any chairman's comments?
I'm sorry, I, my, it's raining here, so.
Could it be comments for chairman's comments?
No, um, I just wanna thank everybody for uh working along with me tonight. I'm in Florida. It's uh, my, my internet is a little unstable with the satellite, so.
I'm sorry.
All the help.
Would you like to entertain a motion to adjourn Eddie at this point or?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the meeting is adjourned at seven forty-seven.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.